Good evening, everybody. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg. Deputy Mayor Camstrino.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Here.
Councilmember Vataglia.
May I have your floor.
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and JSB-10:4-6 at sec, notice having been published according to law with a copy on file in the City Clerk's office and a copy posted on the bulletin board in City Hall.
Okay. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Before we start, I'd like to start with a moment of silence for all the victims of the Tree of Life synagogue shooting in Pittsburgh. They're all in our prayers. Okay. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the City Manager for the agenda for the evening. What are you doing over there?
Well, I'd be sitting in front of the screen here. So the first is we have a presentation by our Hackensack Environmental Commission in reference to the greenhouse project.
Gary Tuzano, 169 Fairmount, Hackensack. I am the present Chairman of the Hackensack Environmental Commission. Thank you for having us tonight, Mayor and Council. This project on the greenhouse is our main focus in our newly reorganized environmental commission. We have several others that you've heard me speak of, but this is our main focus tonight with our PowerPoint presentation by Mrs. Lorelei Kaminsky, who has been involved for quite a few years even before our commission was reorganized through the high school. She is an educator in Hackensack High School and 100% has her heart and soul into this project, so I'm going to turn the program over to Lorelei Kaminsky at this time.
I'm Lorelei Kaminsky. I now reside at 170 Prospect Avenue, and as Gary said, I've been involved with the greenhouse for many years. I was actually on the Environmental Commission 20 years ago and then went to the Shade Tree Committee, now back on Environmental Commission. But I also want to just mention that the Gone Green Club was something that I started at the high school, I would say 15 years ago, in an effort to get the children who were not the athletes and not the ones who really had other interests to have something they could do which was service-oriented, et cetera. So we went to a lot of the parks, et cetera, did cleanups. We also then found that the greenhouse was a place we could actually have students learn how to plant seeds, get their hands dirty, propagate plants, et cetera. So that's what this PowerPoint is going to show, how these students were educated in growing their own plants, vegetables, et cetera, trees, and what benefit it showed to them. Okay? So let me go through the PowerPoint. Is everybody okay to see this from the standpoint? I hope I'm not blocking anybody here. I'm probably blocking the video gun. And I apologize, my voice is going, so I'm going to have to try to keep this mic here. We wanted to create, right now we have a greenhouse in Hackensack, but we want to create a state-of-the-art greenhouse and to be able to increase, okay, sustainability, cultivation, and conservation of green space. We'd like to pick this up so that we can, you know, take our cityscapes and also then involve the students and involve people in town in getting involved in the community gardens, et cetera. There will be volunteerism in here, there will be sustainable programming, et cetera, and we could generate revenue from these projects. The greenhouse was actually donated from a property on Prospect Avenue. The original part of the greenhouse came from the, there was a mansion on Prospect before it was sold and knocked down to put up the high rises. The one mansion had a greenhouse attached to it. That was the original greenhouse, was actually moved from Prospect and put down on this property. After that, the City of Hackensack added to that structure and dedicated it in 1975 as a horticultural facility. The facility wasn't used until 2014. All right. Again, before that time, I had my students in there working and it was a real hands-on thing. Revitalization is now needed. It's been sitting dormant for the past four years and it's been getting in very bad disrepair. And we think it can be revitalized fairly quickly if we can just get the right resources. At one time, over 50 of my students used the greenhouse. Here you see a group of them. They had 1,500 plants that we planted. All of those plants were then donated to the other schools in town, and they were planted around the schools. Each little middle school, elementary school, et cetera, got those plants and then distributed them and planted them around their schools. So every student got a chance to really understand where these things came from. They grew them, they planted them. So we can do this again, and we can do similar programs with, you know, new types of students, new people, different age groups, et cetera. The current greenhouse is looking like this now. That's as big as it is. It's about 25 feet by, what, 125, Gary?
About almost 40 by 125.
Forty by 125 feet. There is a lot of property on the one side of it, which we are looking at putting in some community gardens down the road. If you look inside, again, the glass and everything is not in bad repair. If you look at it from the aerial view, it's actually in pretty decent repair, but there are panes that are cracked and whatever need to be repaired. The piping and everything needs to be revamped. There's a lot of rust around, but, you know, a lot of it could be done. There is some solid asbestos tables in there. That's what they used to use years ago. They don't flake, they're solid, it's not loose, but they need to be, that needs to come off. And some of the asbestos siding over there where that little spigot is, okay, would have to be removed. To look to the future, what we're looking for is that we can get all district school programs. So this could be not just Hackensack, but we could extend it to our other districts, Rochelle Park, Maywood, to get students involved, adult education, senior centers, programs for handicapped, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. I see we have people here from different groups that might support this, organizations, religious institutions. This is just a picture again of some of the things that we were growing in the greenhouse back then. We also did trees. We, the City of Hackensack requested from the state of New Jersey, they gave out 100 trees in one year. We were able to get 100 whips, they call them. They're two-foot whips. We took the whips and we were able to plant them in buckets, and then once they grew and got to a size what they were proportioned, I believe, Pedro, didn't the Boy Scouts take some of those and plant them along the riverfront? So we actually took trees that we started from whips and were actually then able to take those trees and put them out along the riverfront. So there was a lot of, again, benefit that was given to the environment from this, you know, project, and they were all free trees. So what we would like to do is partner with different universities for internships, education, research. Montclair State, who we have someone here, which I'll introduce in a minute, has been the first one to really step up and say they can really help us. There are other people who are interested, but Bergen Community, and I think that's really it. Those two have talked to us. I think Fairley just found out about it. But there are other, you know, institutions that might be interested, local businesses, nurseries, landscape places might also have some interest in helping us with the project. Community gardens are a big thing now. Everybody, every town I talk to has some kind of community garden where they have residents actually growing vegetables and things on their own and donating them back to food banks. We also have the Hackensack University Medical Center. I did try to reach out to them, has been in contact with me all the past, like, year or two. They would like to get involved for nutritional studies, having people come down there and actually talk about healthy eating, diet, nutrition, et cetera. We have a culinary program at the high school. They would be interested because they would like to grow vegetables and have them used in the culinary program. So when you start looking at this thing, it can be so wide as far as the use, you're not just looking at it just being a garden club. I mean, you can have a garden club, but that's not the purpose. I think the purpose is to be a community place, an educational facility, and something that can be used by everyone. These are some of the groups. We talked about Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, et cetera, PTAs, senior citizens, the school district. Everyone could get their, you know, piece of it and be able to benefit from this space. Okay? So do we refurbish or rebuild? That's the question. And that's why we're here with the council tonight. We want to know what direction should we take, and this is how we're going to approach it. We can come up with plans, et cetera, and try to, you know, come up with something new. The building is about 4,600 square feet. We'd have to replace current glass panes, repair, et cetera, you know, all the circulation systems, electric systems, et cetera. We did have a proposal two years ago, actually from DMR, which said that they could do a study, and for, you know, a particular amount, they could say, yes, we can do a study and find out how much would it cost to repair it, put it back into, you know, functioning use, or would it be something that would be better to, since it would cost in excess of a certain amount, maybe take it down and put up a building which would cost just as much. Okay? So we do have a proposal to do that study, and what we were asking maybe the council today is could we maybe look at getting that proposal approved so we can get that study started. Also, further considerations, again, the community garden part, we have not done that yet. TNEC does it. Englewood does it. So many places do community gardens, and so many people can benefit by that. A lot of the people in the town will be living in apartments, especially new apartments, and they're going to want to maybe grow some vegetables, or herbs, or tomatoes, or whatever, and get their hands, you know, dirty and do something, you know, different on a weekend. So it would be nice to have, and there's plenty of space there, for community gardens, raised gardens, where people can pay a small fee, $15 or something for the season, and they can grow their vegetables, whatever they want. So we would like, again, to get a new quote from DMR to do a study to either repair or replace. Again, expenses, this could all be done later on, but you know, there's going to be expenses. So how do we have expenses? Well, we're going to need revenues. So where is the revenue going to come from? We can market the place, you know, from, you know, any kind of newsletters, et cetera, school flyers, bulletins, and we can get funding, hopefully, from the city to start it off, some maintenance grants, contributions from corporate donations, private donations. We can do fundraisers, selling panes of glass, et cetera, like they sold seats at the Cultural Arts Center, and people paid for seats. We can do public school funds, et cetera, Arbor Day Sale of Trees, and other stakeholder things that we need. So I guess that's where we're going to be looking for. We want to do this for, you know, for the long run. This isn't something we're going to do, and it's going to be there today and then gone tomorrow. Okay? This is going to be something that's going to be a lasting operation. So we need to be able to talk about income generation for the future. Again, we can use fees. Also, the recreation department can use this for summer camp programs. I've been to the New York Botanical Gardens, and they run a summer camp program where they have students like those that go out and they grow all these vegetables, and then at the end of the camp season, they run a food market, and then they have a sale and they sell all the things. So the students actually see how the vegetables were grown, they were harvested, and then they actually sell them at tables at the market. So it's a really great thing for students and little, you know, young children to do. So you can do a recreation program there. Community gardens, we talked about, greenhouse community garden sale of seasonal produce if we wanted to do it, almost like a farmer's market, and trees, herbs, et cetera. So thank you. I'd like to thank you that I think, I'm going to turn this over in a minute, but I just want to say that I think this can be a jewel of Hackensack, and only because I'm using the word jewel, because when you look at it, if it's, you know, with the glass and everything, it really does shine, and it would be something, and a lot of you may not even know where it is, I'll just tell you. In Johnson Park, if you're looking like from the Sears parking lot where the Sears auto body is, if you look down into where the soccer fields are there, that's where the greenhouse is. It's kind of hidden from the road because there is a fence there now, and it's all overgrown with ivy and stuff, so you really can't see into the greenhouse. But it is there. It is a fenced-in area already, so it is secure, so if we had community gardens, et cetera, it is already a secure area. We don't have to worry about people, you know, getting in and out of there. So we're hoping that that's something that we can bring to life. And I would like to turn the future, or another future look at it, to Amy Teninga. She's here from Montclair State University. She's the Director of their Sustainability Studies Group, and she has been very instrumental over the past year and a half with trying to help us formalize this, because before we were just like, yes, we want a greenhouse, but now we're getting direction. So if I can introduce Amy and turn this over to you. You're done. Thank you.
Thank you. So just as a reminder, this is what the current facilities look like, and my background is in botany. I have two degrees in botany and one in ecology and evolution, and so I've spent a lot of time in greenhouses, but I've built a lot of partnerships with the New York Botanical Garden and the city zoos in New York City, but now with municipalities in New Jersey, Newark, and Jersey City, and Verona, and Montclair. This is of particular interest to me because I think that there's so many different ways that we can partner and help support any of the kinds of programs that go on here through our faculty and the kinds of programs we have in nutrition studies and ecology and sustainability. So if we take a quick peek, obviously you could have more greenhouse space and public-private greenhouse space so the community can get involved. You could think about, you know, thinking forward, you could have some energy-smart kinds of technology space where you might be able to do some workforce development because the biggest growing field in the coming decade is going to be in installation of smart meters and solar panels and smart energy kinds of technologies. So this would be a good space for that as well. Classroom and meeting space, of course, the raised beds that Lorelei mentioned, and maybe even, you know, eventually in a phased kind of way, including some revenue-generating kind of facilities in the way of restaurants or other kinds of things that might attract the public. So things like this, where other greenhouses have partnered with private entities, could be a possibility. So the benefits include education, health and wellness, workforce development, and economic growth. I partner a lot with Hackensack Meridian Health, and a lot of the partnerships that we build are really in support of your goals, not ours, and so, you know, whatever your vision is, we can help to get there. But this is one possibility that might be a little bit more forward-thinking, and so this is a multi-level facility on the same footprint that's there right now, and... There's a little video.
There's just a 30-second spot, but it gives you a sense as to what this could look like, I guess if you found a considerable amount of money.
This kind of shows multi-use facilities with classroom spaces and greenhouses up on the roof and some of the tech kinds of opportunities that I mentioned with workforce development. There are some large impact investing kinds of grants available. I write a lot of grants. These are more than million dollars, many, many million dollar grants. So I could see everything from, let's replace a few panes of glass, to something, you know, further than this kind of vision. But, you know, like I said at the very beginning, I help to support the kinds of initiatives that people want to undertake and bring in experts that can help with that initiative. So there is some meeting space, there's classroom space, there's greenhouse space, and then this can be built out in different ways as well. So it's just a little section of the kind of thing that you might be able to do much better.
Very good. Last point I'll add is we have support from the Hackensack Riverkeeper. As you probably know, they've issued letters of support, the Northern New Jersey Community Foundation, Arts Bergen, the Hackensack University Medical Center, all groups, and some of they may have been mentioned before, but there's ample community interest to support.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you very much to both Lorelei and Amy for great presentations.
Thanks.
At this point, I think, you know, when we come to the council, I think we're coming with an idea that can benefit the city. And when I look at Hackensack, I've lived here for 25 years, I've watched it change and grow, and the council's been doing a great job in getting growth in here with the apartments and et cetera, you know, that you're doing. But I think at this point, we need to look at, again, what are the people going to be attracted to, the type of people you're bringing in, millennials, et cetera. They're going to want to have something else, like we're bringing in rock climbing facilities or bringing in, you know, other things. Let's give them something that is what they're interested in, organic foods, you know, something that they can get their hands dirty if they want to, where they can send their children if they have them. So I, you know, I just hope that the council understands that this is a vision that can be something beneficial to the city.
What I'm going to do is I need a motion to open to the public because we want to hear, we see the public here, we definitely want to hear from you.
Okay. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg. Hi. Deputy Mayor Camstrino.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Hi.
Councilmember Vataglia.
Hi.
Hi. So before the public comes up, I just want to say for myself, I think it was a great presentation, Lorelei. Very good. And we appreciate it. Mrs. Kaminsky has been involved in the city, her and her husband, for quite a long time. Ray is on the planning board, and as you heard, Lorelei has been involved with several different things through the years. And I think it's a great idea, and, you know, we're kind of like, the greenhouse has been like stuck in limbo because we don't know what to do with it. But this is, we appreciate you like grabbing the bull by the horns, you and Gary and the Environmental Commission, because we could use the help on getting this thing going. But we're going to, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I'll do whatever I can to assist you guys. But anybody from the public who would like to speak on this, please come forward, and we're only going to talk about the greenhouse right now.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, people of Hackensack. My name is Joe Campagna from TNEC, New Jersey. I've lived in New Barbados for 65 years now, and I think the greenhouse is a good idea. I think you all need to contact Duke Farms. They're the ones who give out the gramps and who have been doing this for eons and are better at it than the botanical gardens, and they help restore the original plant life down in New Jersey, cattails and all the other original stuff. I also think the Hackensack Riverkeeper should be involved because we need to really restore some of the native habitat along the river and work hand-in-hand with Duke Farms, who are really trying to bring back these native species, native species that are important to places like Borg's Woods and Steib Park. That is something we all could get involved in, and I wouldn't mind, I would even help if you got that going. I'd fly somebody in from Hackensack, Minnesota, one of the native people who works on this very thing. Hackensack, Minnesota's been around longer than Hackensack. It was post office back in the 1800s. Okay? So I think that's a great idea, I think we should do, but I don't think it should drain, it should not be a drain on our tax budget. We have too many drains. What we need to do, I think we should have, install vocational things in the high school level, those thermal pane windows. We can make those and teach kids how to make them, because thermal pane windows is the way all windows are going to be. We can have a thermal pane, gas-filled window facility in the high school shop. The kids can build them and install them and get them going. We also, like I said, solar and wind, the power, because it's going to eat a lot, awful lot of energy, and I think that's an important thing, too. But I think growing trees for the city, growing plants for the parks, I think that's a way to offset the budget, and as long as it offsets the budget and it helps restore the environment and you can get grants from, you know, real good organizations like Duke Farms and work with, you know, our Hackensack Riverkeeper, I think it'll be a great thing. Okay?
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Hello. I'm Len Schwartz. I live in TNEC also, 703 Riverview Avenue, and I happen to be the Director of the TNEC greenhouse. So I'm excited for you because you have a really great facility, or the potential for one. We have a different orientation. About 100 years ago, TNEC had its sewage treatment plant in, right by Overberg Creek, and once they hooked up to the county sewage treatment plant, it didn't need that anymore. It turned out that they had built a greenhouse over the sewage treatment plant, and they didn't know what to do with their structure. It's much older than yours, so it's a little rustier and a little more decrepit, but they turned that over to a community group, the garden club. And whereas I hear the emphasis here as being so strongly educational, which is really very good, in TNEC it's different. It's a recreational program. It benefits maybe about 75 people who are very into gardening, and we actually run the greenhouse, so it's not something that's a tax drain as much as it would be if you had officials that were paid to do it. Over time, we've steadily improved our greenhouse. We eliminated the glass because the kids found that they could throw rocks up into the air, and they'd make a nice hole when they came down into the roof. We have what most greenhouses around here have, a thin wall structure, a plastic roof, which is greater at insulating, so you have less heat loss, and stronger in every way, conveys a little less light, but still in all, it's the way to go in terms of energy conservation. So we have a plant sale, which finances our operations, and it's a big deal for us. It's the center of our activity. But we also have a local school, which has all of its students come to the greenhouse for a lesson over a two-week period, and they buy plants from us. We have a junior garden club. We have various outreaches to the community to get involved in gardening. So your emphasis sounds great. I mean, if you're going to go in an educational direction or some combination of the two, where you have a recreational program for your adults who actually manage the greenhouse for you, you have a less, I don't know, like, my feeling is, is that your plans are very ambitious. My feeling is, is simpler, might be better, and maybe less of an initial investment on your part. But if you can do it, if you can do it in this way, by all means, it's the way to go. I don't know whether we can give you advice or not in terms of the structure and how to set it up more cheaply. You're going to have an analysis that tells you, perhaps, that you're going to have to spend a lot of money, and maybe you can do it more simply, and we'd be ready to give you any advice that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen.
My name is Jeffrey Clark. I'm from Bogota, but I'm here representing the Hackensack Holy Trinity Boy Scout Troop Five.
And my name is Robert Kijak. I'm here representing PAC Five. I have the younger scouts from kindergarten through fourth grade. Jeff takes them from fourth grade on.
To 18. I can't offer you money, I can't offer you advice, but we can offer you labor. We have a number of scouts from Lion up to Life Scouts becoming Eagle, who can, who would like to work on projects. In this case, an Eagle project could be very easily done, which would mean labor and help with anything needs to be done. One of our Eagle scouts who just finished up a community garden project in South Hackensack has already had experience with it, some of us, at least with the community garden project. But what I see here is a number of opportunities at all levels with our scouts to provide labor and give them a little bit of experience and fun.
Very good.
That's it. Thank you.
I was in PAC Five as well, by the way. Mark.
Mark Stein, Hackensack, New Jersey. I'm a resident of this fine community. I can give a little bit of a historical perspective on the greenhouse. Back in the 1990s, the greenhouse was used a lot. We developed, or the city developed, a lot of plants there. The plants adorned many of our parks, as you've heard. We had students, as Lorelei had indicated, with classes down there, and many of the plants that were grown were utilized in beautified city hall with the mums that were done in the fall. So anything that this council can do to redevelop and grow this greenhouse would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else in the public?
I'm from the public. I'm going to try to multitask. Albert Dibb, basically, Hackensack.
Okay.
I am the city's Director of Redevelopment. I'm also a resident. I've been trying to stay involved with this project since its inception, and I guess the one thing that I wanted to point out that I've always liked about it was greenhouse gardening is one of the few things that old people and young people can do together. You know, unless you're Councilman Vataglia, you're not going to go out and necessarily play soccer with your four- or five-year-old grandson, but you can teach them how to grow the food that you grew up eating. you grew up eating as a child. So I think that this is an opportunity to do something that other towns have done, but bring a certain flair to it that you might only get in Hackensack.
A motion to close to the public?
Over.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Counsel?
Good evening. I really don't think there's any negatives to this project. I've been in the greenhouse, at the space, and it's really magnificent. As Ms. Kaminski said and Amy said, when you walk down there, it's not just about the greenhouse itself, the whole space. You look at, there's space around it. We are speaking about, speaking to a gentleman about beekeeping. There's areas for tables, there's areas for farm stands. You get the riverkeeper involved. You look down the road, there might be launches for kayaking. You just look at the whole space. And there's room for parking. It's adjacent to the park right there. There's a lot of businesses around that would use it. You have University Plaza there. You would get a lot of foot traffic. When you think of our partners involved, you had so many colleges in the town. You have the medical center. You have a lot of players. Bergen Academies are right there. I've spoken to them, and they said that they had an initiative where their students in their architectural landscaping class actually designed for these community garden for them. So those different things, we get the schools involved. And you guys, the environmental club, thank you so much for all your hard work. You guys really covered everything, but it's a lot of benefits to it. And a lot of towns that have gone through redevelopment and rehabilitation, they've taken on these initiatives. Because when you think about it, Hackensack is very diverse housing-wise. And a lot of us are lucky enough to have our own yards and own gardens, but you have a lot of people that are in condominiums and apartments and don't have that. So this would be a great opportunity. And just as Mr. Dibb said, you know, this is one of those few things that everybody could enjoy. You have the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, the senior citizens, everybody, students, everyone. And it can be a revenue maker. So I think it's a great thing. And thank you, everyone, for coming out and lending your support. Our Troop Five and PAC Five leaders, Mr. Schwartz, everyone that came out to, you know, really lend their support. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Steph. Again, thank you for wonderful presentation. And I just loved the look of that last little video that we saw. I mean, wouldn't that just be spectacular? But I also hear the Teaneck side, and I think that we're probably going to wind with something in the middle, something that meets our needs, and hopefully something that we can also phase and grow into, so that, you know, we can design something and we can get something up and working fairly quickly with the ability to know that we can expand or add on some of these other things. I think that that is a very realistic approach for us in the city. Albert, myself, and Stephanie have met over the years with a number of folks trying to get this started. And we just didn't get there. So the fact that we now have this group, that I can see your determination that you're going to support this and you're going to get this done, we're extremely thankful for that. We did talk with Bergen Community College a number of times. I know they're interested. I didn't even know you were coming, and I was actually at a collaborative meeting at Fairleigh last week, and I brought this up to them, because, I mean, they have the Hackensack campus as well, which, you know, their parking lot, et cetera, is right there. So, and they were very interested, you know, from a number of perspectives. Not only, you know, from looking at it as growing, but also looking at it from the psychology, social work aspect of, you know, using this, again, you know, palliative care and the goods and the positives of doing this type of thing. So they have a new, some new people over there I'll put you in touch with, but I think that that conversation is also very, very worth having. And, you know, we have, again, Bergen, we have Fairleigh, and, no, I forgot.
Eastway.
Eastway, thank you. So we have a number of colleges in town that perhaps could work with us. I know the hospital was interested. So you've got your work cut out for you. But again, I think that the value that it brings to the city, the value that it brings to the residents, I mean, it's just, we can't even begin to quantify it. So it's a very positive thing. And we, you know, we've spent a considerable amount of time so far redeveloping the city. And, you know, we looked at bringing the arts back into the city, and we're spending money on recreation in the city. And I think this is the third component that we really haven't gotten to yet. So, you know, it's on the horizon, and we thank you for your hard work.
Gary, I want to thank you and the Environmental Committee for this presentation tonight. Me personally, I would love to sit down with you, Gary, and just see a little, a little bit more of your plans and everything. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I welcome any effort to try to put the greenhouse in shape. No question that that will be benefit for the kids. Like Albert said, I spent maybe quarter of my life in the soccer field with the kids, just to try to help them there to develop not only the skills of the game, but I just to try to make better citizens. My father used to have a garden right in front of my house, and eventually, when he was like maybe 65-year-old, he got a big farm, and he got different kinds of fruits and vegetables. So, and it's beautiful to see how the plant grow up and go and get the fruit from the tree. So I thank you for your effort, and you have my full support. Thank you.
Thank you, Leo. I guess what, one of the council's first things we have to do is get ahold of Fran from DMR, who I just happened to see sitting in second row, and move forward with getting some information from you, and get this quote through and move forward. Albert touched on something that Kathy and I used to talk about all the time. That one of the best parts of growing things is it's usually passed on from seniors to their children and grandchildren. Grandmothers will teach granddaughters and grandsons how to plant. And this is a great opportunity also for interaction between our seniors, which we're now going to have a new senior center down at the M&amp;M Building. It's a great chance to interact, for interaction with our seniors and our young kids in town, which is much needed today. It makes for a better world as far as I'm concerned. But the way we are going right now with the, like you mentioned, the millennials, but they're really into green. You know, we've made it clear to a lot of our developers, we're asking for green buildings, you know, all different types of things. And even as far as what we're doing with getting around the city, we're working on keeping it green. So the greenhouse just fits perfectly right into it. And like Stephanie said, there's really no negative here. It's only positive. It's just how we're going to do it, and let's get it, you know, let's get it ball-rolling and get it done. But we're getting pretty good at that stuff. So I, what we needed is someone like you guys to spearhead this, and we really appreciate that. But we're going to give you all the support we can and move this thing forward. So my promise to you is, and I think the council will back it, let's get DMR in here and come up with, you know, their thoughts on whether this building should be restored or taken down and a new one put up, and what the cost of that would be. So that would be our next step. So we're behind that, and we're going to move forward with that. All right? Thank you. So before we move forward, I'll take a few-minute recess. If anybody wants to say you're more than welcome, but we're going to go back to regular city business. So thank you for coming tonight, Gary, and the Environmental Commission. Thank you so much for all your hard work. So are we going to talk about the Second Street redevelopment?
We are.
With that, I'm going to recuse myself on this.
Okay.
All right.
Should I begin?
Sure.
Francis Reiner with DMR Architects, 777 Terrace Avenue in Hasbro Heights. I wish I was going to be able to give as good of a presentation as the last one, but I'm going to do the best I can. So this evening, we're here to give you a presentation. It is really, it is the first reading of what would be the Second Street redevelopment plan, which means the process will then be presented in front of the planning board for the public to be able to listen to and then provide comment. And then a second reading back in front of the mayor and council sometime at the end of November. So this is really just the first opportunity for the mayor and council to be able to see what's being proposed and what will be presented to the planning board on November 7. If you all recall, the city of Hackensack went through an investigation study to designate, to determine whether or not certain properties met criteria as an area in need of rehabilitation. That was presented to the planning board in September. The map on your, on the right side shows both yellow and red color. That red and yellow color was the area that was investigated. The area that we're talking about tonight, which would be the redevelopment plan, would be for the areas identified in red. All of those properties are owned by the hospital. So the redevelopment plan is only for the properties identified in red, not for all of the properties that were designated. It's important to note, and we've said, we said this at the planning board, but I want to say it again, is that this process was as an area in need of rehabilitation, which does not permit condemnation. This is really about a plan for the future and for the hospital, and for the hospital's future. As I mentioned, the redevelopment plan's for HUMC properties only. This is the first reading. We presented, we will be presenting this plan to the planning board on November 7. They will be recommending either to move forward and have the mayor and council then vote on it for the second reading, which would then be the adoption of the redevelopment plan, which in essence represents new zoning for those particular properties. It's important to note that even after a redevelopment plan, if it were to be approved, the applicant on any particular project would still be required to come in front of the planning board to submit, to present a site plan application, which would include a whole host of things, including traffic studies and building elevations, and public comment on any particular project that may be approved or may be requested for these properties. So this is just one step in what is multiple steps in the process. We always like to let everybody know that the redevelopment plan is consistent with the state plan, with the Bergen County Master Plan, the 2001 Master Plan for the city, as well as the 2009 reexamination report, and that it promotes revitalization, economic growth, and prevents further deterioration, which is really the reason why the property was designated, because of the combined stormwater sewer system that is located in this part of the area. That's why these properties were designated in the first place. I'm not going to read all this, but I just wanted, it's this part of the document that you've all been given a copy of. Essentially, what we're saying is, is that all the permitted uses that are in, within these properties are already permitted uses. We are not permitting any other uses that are not already permitted in the existing underlying zoning within this redevelopment plan, which include the whole host of those things, the surface and structure parking, as well as stormwater sewer utility. The one thing that we are adding that is a little different is, is we have a conditional use for a potential higher education medical school facility. I want to be clear that nobody is proposing that. We simply made sure that if in the future, a educational facility were to be proposed, that it would be, it would meet the medical office standards. And I'll show you what those standards are in a minute. These are the bulk standards that are part of the redevelopment plan. It's important to note that all of these, with a couple of exceptions, are the same in terms of the underlying zone. So there are, it's broken into two fades, two different uses. One is the hospital, medical center, and training facility, and the other would be a medical office facility. And so the track sizes are the same as the underlying zoning, the minimum track widths are the same as the underlying zoning, the minimum front yard setbacks are the same as the underlying zoning, as are the interior and the secondary streets, as are the rear yard. All the same as the underlying zoning. The differences between this particular zone and what we're proposing and the underlying zoning are the maximum building height, which is being proposed as 200 feet or 12 stories in the medical, in the medical center, and 72 feet in the medical office are higher than what is existing. And then the track coverage is slightly higher as well, from 75% to 90% in the case of the medical center. There are a host of other requirements that are part of it. The most important piece, though, are the next two slides. As a part of a redevelopment plan, any developer of these properties would be required to separate out the stormwater sewer systems along Second Street and Atlantic Street to the, to the railroad avenue corridor. And that may either be at Atlantic Street at Railroad Avenue, or it may be at Sussex Street at Railroad Avenue. Where the city is currently having an assessment done by one of its engineering firms to determine which is the best location to separate out the system. This is important because it's why the properties were designated in the first place. And second, it provides the ability to, to correct a current issue, which is the combined system in this area, when during flooding, creates overflows within the combined system that causes backups in people's properties. It causes flooding along Railroad Avenue. And so what the redevelopment plan requires is that if a developer comes in and builds a project, that they're going to have to fix the system along Second Street, Atlantic Street, separate out those systems so that the stormwater can go directly into the river, and the sewage can then go directly into BCA, which is how it's supposed to happen. So it's a really critical piece of why the redevelopment plan was done in the first place. And that's kind of the detail of it, but that's the main impetus of it. The other piece of this is that the developer is required, within 18 months of any particular project, of the adoption of the redevelopment plan, to provide an analysis to the city with the city's engineers' help, to make sure that we understand what buildings on the property are internally separated. In other words, the stormwater and the sewer lines within the buildings are separated, but they come out at the bottom of the building into a combined system, and which buildings are a combined system, meaning the stormwater and the sewer is collected within the building and runs through the middle of the building. In order to figure out how to separate the hospital buildings, the existing buildings, the older buildings, so that we are taking all of the stormwater from the hospital's existing buildings that have a separated internal system, and run them into a separated system underground, again, which will, which will allow the water to run directly to the river and allow the sewage to go to BCA, which will further reduce the existing issues of the combined system that's in the streets right now. In addition, the developer would be required to do a shadow study on any properties that border, any property that's not within the redevelopment or the rehabilitation plan. It would be required to do a traffic study for any project that is greater than 20,000 square foot. In addition, they would be required to provide a construction logistics study, which would basically allow for the city to understand how long the, any roads may be closed, where traffic is coming, construction traffic is coming from and going to during construction, all so that the city can manage the particular project in the best way possible. With that being said, the, the, the hospital, as was reported in newspapers, is looking at doing a project. And this is some of the images that, that may come in front of the, the planning board in December or January or in 2019. So this represents, this is Second Street located at the bottom. The yellow represents the new lobby that would be built. And the building would actually be, would go over Second Street, so there would be, the road would be maintained on Second Street with a two-height, or maybe even three-height of opening, and then you'd have the building built above it. And so a couple of images of what that would look like. This is taken from the residential development next door. The red brick is the building actually that goes over Second Street. The glass is actually on the hospital property. This building attaches to the existing parking structure that is located across Second Street. This is just another angle from next to the existing parking garage. A picture looking on Second Street, you can see that a portion of the building goes over Second Street. The road continues underneath Second Street, and then the, the medical center facilities are located in the glass tower off to the left. This is looking what would be north from Second Street, again, looking through Second Street, how the building goes over, and then the hospital, the new hospital building on the images to the right. And then this would be Second Street at grade level. You can see that there is a light well so that it is not, does not negatively impact Second Street. And so those are all kind of the conceptual plans that have been developed at this point. What we're really looking at is the redevelopment plan, which represents the uses that are permitted and the bulk standards. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
John, not here. Any council members have any questions?
Andy, you can.
Everybody okay? Leo?
Yeah.
Ted?
Good.
Thank you, Fran.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation, as always, and look forward to hearing from you.
We'll see you in November.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Where's John now? Bring him back?
Is he done?
Yep. First, yeah.
All right. Back to you, Ted.
Thank you, Fran.
Sharpen your pencil on that greenhouse thing.
Yes, sir.
Fran.
Fran.
Yeah.
You're up next with Teterboro.
Next is me. Okay, I attended the quarterly Teaneck meeting at Teterboro Airport, and as usual... Okay, I attended the quarterly Tannic meeting at Teterboro Airport, and as usual, if there's something worthwhile to say, I'd like to take some time and just go over it as briefly as I can for everyone's knowledge information. And this meeting, the FAA did attend, and there was some interesting information that was presented, so I wanted to take a few minutes and just try and summarize it to a certain extent. Basically, the thing that was of most interest is there is, there was, on October 5th, President Donald Trump signed into law new FAA legislation. And that legislation, oh, there's probably 20 or so different components in there, all of them very favorable to our situation here in the city of Hackensack. This was called the Five-Year FAA Reauthorization Bill, for those of you that would like to look it up. In the House, it was H R 302 was the tracking number. Okay, what this, I'm going to just pick out a couple of the things that I feel are of most interest to us. One of the things they did is the FAA is now requiring by this legislation to appoint a noise, and I'm not going to try and murder this word like I usually do, ombudsman, ombudsman, in each of its regional offices. And this is, this ombudsman is going to be serving as a liaison between the agency and the public. So the FAA, prior to this, their requirement was to have something called community engagement. And I guess some of the feedback has been that engaging the community isn't enough. So the wording is now changed to community involvement. So this ombudsman is really going to really serve more as a two-way communication than perhaps the one-way communication in the past that was happening. So this is a good thing for us. If I wasn't so busy, I might want to try and sign up for this myself. All right, a second point that's, I also think is of interest to us is there's different stages of aircraft, and these stages, primarily the denotation of them that's most important to us, is how noisy they are. And these stages, again, have evolved through the years, so as we've progressed in time, the aircraft have had more and more constraints put on the amount of noise that they generate. So the newer aircraft, by requirement, is less noisy than the older aircraft. So there's basically five stages, one, two, three, four, five, five being the most recent or the newest type of aircraft. Stage-two aircraft has been not prohibited, but severely limited throughout the country as being fairly noisy. Teterboro Airport, at this point in time, does not use or allow any stage-two aircraft to be flying yet. Teterboro Airport now is predominantly stage-three aircraft and some stage-four aircraft. This new bill is requiring the FAA to initiate a study as to what the cost and implications would be to either eliminate stage-three aircraft or to make them be modified to comply to the noise requirement of the stage-four aircraft. In a nutshell, the stage-four aircraft are functioning about 10 decibels less sound than what the stage-three was. And most stage-four aircraft were built after 2006, just to give you some timeframe. Most stage-fives are very, very new. We're seeing them being built in 2018 currently. So that, again, is another big plus for us. Another thing, again, a pet peeve of mine, is they're giving the FAA one year to do an evaluation and come up with alternative metrics for their studies of noise projections. They use something called D N L, which is their day and night leveling, which uses a certain number of decibels. They model this to a certain extent, and I've been a critic of their modeling techniques as I asked questions. There were things I found out that certainly were not to an advantage to us in the way they modeled the staters. In fact, when they were presenting it, they actually said, Deputy Mayor from Hackensack will be happy to hear, maybe she can now get her suggestions into the model for the FAA. One of the things, for example, that I complained about when I learned of how they were doing this is when they do this modeling, they, they take into consideration, you know, ground elevation, but not building elevation. So when they're modeling, they're saying the noise or their projection of the noise is the same whether you're in a single-story, single-family home, or you're in a 25-story apartment or condominium, and we know that that's not true. So they, you know, there's many pieces to their modeling I think that could be greatly improved, so this is another big thing for us. They're asking them to do a thorough investigation on impacts to health from noise, from fumes, before they proceed with more of these recommendations. And it goes on and on and on. The helicopter use, we have, we don't seem to have too many complaints, those of us that filed the complaints with Teterboro about helicopter noise, but some of the surrounding towns do. So they're also, helicopters can be quite noisy, so they're also looking at maybe making some changes to how low, especially, you know, you ever notice some of these news reporting helicopters, you know something's going on when you hear that noise that are flying, really flying pretty low? So, and a bunch of other things, if you care to look it up. The other, the other thing, the other news of the day was looking at the environmental study for the new flight path. Now, we've talked about this many times. They're at a point now, apparently this environmental testing or environmental studies that they're required to do, there's three, there's three types of it, okay? And it depends on, you know, how egregious the violation is as to where you fall. So they're pretty far into the first type, and they, it's been determined based on the rules and regulation and criteria that we will require this second-type evaluation. Now, this, again, is more timely. Someone is on it and supposed to be starting it. Of course, my big question is, is that going to impact this projected date that we had of August 2019? So they tell me they're going to have this individual come to the next meeting in January, and hopefully he'll have a better sense of, if there'll be an impact to that date. At this point, they don't know. Again, they reminded me that they were being, you know, extremely thoughtful in saying, we're really targeting August of 2019, which was only a year and a half, and they reminded me that most of these things take three to five years, which kind of made me go, ugh, you know, we really, we really don't want to have to postpone it. So let's hope it's not bad news, but let's just, you know, know that they are working. There's nothing that they've seen that would indicate that this would be in jeopardy in any way, shape, or form. It's just that, of course, safety comes first, and they are going to have to go through this next level of rigor as far as the documentation that they have to do to get this flight path And the only other thing is our actual noise, now not the modeling, we do have noise monitors throughout the city, and our actual noise, the one that's on top of the hospital, is a noise monitor. From last year, from 2017 to 2018, that has increased by a full decibel. So where it was 62.3 in 2017, it's now 63.3. So of all the monitors in this area, and there's six of them, Hackensack is the highest. So, you know, the next highest would be in Carlstadt at 57. So our noise monitor on top of the hospital is definitely showing that we're seeing the impacts most significantly of the surrounding towns. And I think that's what's helping us in our initiative to get this new flight path. But I have to say, please continue to make your phone calls or log your emails because it is very important. Now, as it's going into this next phase of this study, they will be looking at new areas where this flight path will be hitting and getting feedback from those communities. So we want to, you know, keep our name on that list that, yes, we're still seeing things. So, you know, when you see something, say something. If you see a low-flying plane, if you hear something out of the ordinary, make the phone call or send an email. It's on our website for information. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Next?
Yes. Back to the agenda for the Cal meeting for October 30th. Next on the agenda is the Demers mural discussion. The city of Hackensack has been approached through the efforts of the Upper Main Alliance and also the community to place a mural on Demers Place. Obviously, this is not taxpayer-funded, so it's open to interpretation. The only thing that I have some concerns about is that there should be a protocol or some process for this, other than just someone decides that we're going to paint something on the side of a building, and the rest of the world's going to like it or love it. I'm not so sure in this day and age that we all are in agreement on what goes on in other people's minds, and this is a sense of community. So I don't have any protocol in place. I think that this needs to be studied. I will offer the suggestion that, with time permitting, I'd like to look at some other communities and see what they use.
Exactly.
As a process for placing murals. If you wanted to place a sign, we have all kinds of protocols, sizes, approvals, process, planning board, zoning board, all these functions in place. Here, there's nothing essentially on the books.
Yeah, I agree. I think, like I said before, let's not reinvent the wheel. I'll ask Steve to check with other municipalities.
Yeah, I've already started that. I spoke to Deputy Mayor Canestrino about this over the weekend, and there are a number of New Jersey municipalities that do have ordinances governing murals, ranging from outright prohibitions to being very permissive about them. It does seem, as the city manager indicated, many of them talk about a process where you have a community arts group where you would apply, and it would ensure that it met community standards. You know, I have not fully looked at, you know, any sort of constitutional implications from it, but I haven't seen any in the research that I've done that suggests that regulating murals, that you just have to simply, under the First Amendment, let anybody paint anything they want, anywhere they want to do that. It seems that it is within the bounds of a municipality to put limitations on it because of the nature of a mural project. So with some more direction from the council as to how they want to go, that might be able to guide me into some sort of legislative response. You know, we've talked about this. I know we've talked about, for example, the marijuana ordinance, which, you know, we're working on, you know, and, you know, it goes from complete permissiveness to complete prohibition, right? And so you have to decide, you know, where on the spectrum the council might choose to lie, and then we can figure out the best sort of ordinance to get you where you want to go. So, you know, that's why we have these discussions in the Cal, so you can, you know, give me that guidance and give Ted that guidance, and we can come back with something that we think you'll find meets your needs.
If I might say, I was invited to one of their meetings where they, the Main Street Alliance was there, plus the building owner was there that's proposing this. So I think, did we have, we put some copies of what it looks like?
I believe there's copies.
If someone wants to see what it's going to look like, there's copies over there. I think the key is to tonight is raising public awareness, so if folks see this painting going on, they understand that this is being done on private property, and this is what they're proposing, and I believe they're ready to start work very soon. And from a council perspective, you know, I think we do, as Steve's saying, I guess we just have to think about this. Right now, we have no policy on murals.
Correct.
So, you know, we could leave it as is, and just whoever wants to paint a mural on their building can paint a mural on their building, or we could listen and look at what some of the other towns are doing and see if we want to restrict it in any way and do that going forward. But I think, I mean, does anybody have any?
My opinion is, number one, the rehab zone has what we call design standards on how the buildings are built and look right off the bat. So I think we have to do something, especially within, for the downtown area, within the rehab zone.
Right, because in the rehab zone, it does not talk about.
Does not address it, but I think we need to address it through the rehab plan because, you know, it's a slippery slope because it's a First Amendment issue. It's subjective. I like something and somebody else hates it. I mean, so it's, you know, it's tough. But I think we need to mirror what some of the other communities are doing, put a group together that monitors this for the city, and really should be evaluated. We just can't let anybody put whatever they want up whenever they want. So that's my opinion. You guys have an opinion on this?
My opinion to the city is, I control the placement about this.
Right.
I can't, anybody complaining is in their mind.
I mean, art's very subjective, and it's difficult, you know, it might be offensive to someone, or, you know, so I guess it's just, it's nice to be able to express yourself, but at the same time, you know, there has to be some type of regulation around it.
Well, I'll take a look, and, you know, we do have some time before the next council meeting, and, you know, I can pull, you know, some of the ordinances that deal with it. I recall Maplewood, Perth Amboy, I think Jersey City has one that's pretty permissive. I think Maplewood's pretty restrictive, so it can give you some samples and forward them along, and you can see if any of them.
Check Montclair also, because they have murals.
Yep, have an approach.
All right. Next.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have a public health notice. We have a free rabies clinic for dogs and cats, which is going to occur Thursday, November 1st, this coming Thursday, between 6:00 P. M. and 8:00 P. M. at our Department of Public Works at 120 East Broadway Street. The other part of this is that the city, through the efforts of our health department, has secured 100 free radon test kits for homeowners. Radon is a odorless, colorless gas that could cause respiratory or cancer. I don't, I don't claim to be an expert of this area, but it is harmful, and obviously we always want to remain safe, so the city is going to provide that to residents. All you have to do is produce your identification that you're a resident of the city, and you will receive your free radon test kit for the homeowner to test to make sure that their health and their household is safe. Next is the proclamation.
There was somebody from the health department in the hallway with tests, with the kits.
We have a resident expert here tonight.
Hello. Hi, how are you? If you're a Hackensack homeowner, we outside here. If you'd like to get a free test kit, you can come back before you leave, and we'll just take down your information, and you get to take the kit home. You can try it at your home, and you can put it back in the envelope, and I'll email directly to the Department of D E P, and the results will come back to you.
What if the test is positive?
They will be telling you, when you receive your results, they're going to tell you what you can do to fix the problem, and they'll give you some recommendations.
Would you be required to fix the problem?
No, this will be up to you.
What about a multi-fold dwelling in the state of New Jersey?
Oh, for the state of New Jersey, you would have to actually see if you're doing wholesale from a house, do require you to do that, but if you are doing, it's only for a single-family dwelling.
You don't need it.
So it's not formal dwellings.
I think it's every year, the rabies shot. It's not needed every year.
Thank you so much.
Give it every year.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Number six on my list is the Bells of Peace Proclamation. This document is basically the ability for, to show respect for November 11th at 11:00 A. M. World War I, to pay respect for that. So there's an app that you can download, and apparently it'll, it'll have a bell ring at the precise time that this is shown, and they're trying to obviously gather support for this program. So the ability for this to work is basically up to the people that want to support World War I and that war, and those that fought and died for it.
Okay.
Next is the Paramus Interlocal Agreement for Fire Department Repairs. This is a renewal that's been in existence since 2014. Chief Freeman has put a lengthy response in explaining the cost, how the city has provided this service, and how it has worked well for the city in the past. Chief Freeman is very detailed in his response, and I would continue to support the program if we have the need and the use for that. Any questions from the council?
No, and I think it's a great idea. I think Paramus does a great job. A lot of other municipalities using it, I've never heard of an issue.
And the cost is great, too.
Yep.
Yep. And the final thing that I have is that we have new members that want to be added to the Environmental Commission as alternatives, and they are Martin Kramer's recommended and Edith Torzano.
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 Gary's wife.
Okay. Small world. And they would be alternates for this, and they're looking to add them at our 2000, October 30th meeting. So if the council approves, we will add these two members to the board, which will assist in them making sure that they have enough for quorum and the ability to. for quorum and the ability to, um, assist and move forward with environmental commission issues. And if there's nothing else, that would complete the city manager's report for October 30th.
Okay, very good. With that, I need a motion to open to the public. Running a little late, so.
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody from the public who would like to speak, please come forward. Give your name and address to the clerk. You will have three minutes.
Good evening. Uh, John Edmonds, uh, on Lincoln Street. Uh, so two quick items. Uh, one I see in the docket for the council's meeting this evening, uh, that the suit with Charles Zisa will be settled. Uh, my own edification, uh, it's, there's no amount specified in that. I was curious as to what the range would be settling at. Uh, is that meaning that all of our litigation with, related to Zisa family and so forth is finished? That's the last of it? And one other item, any news on the 2017, uh, annual audit?
I would defer the first, uh-
Do you wish me to speak to the, to the Zisa matter?
Yes.
Um, the, the litigation involving Chief Zisa is not the civil lawsuit that he filed against the Bergen County Prosecutor's Office, a bunch of individuals, and the city of Hackensack and the county of Bergen. Uh, this is a, a separate matter involving a dispute over the amount that Mr. Zisa believed he was owed as a result of, uh, an agreement that was reached to settle, um, the completion of his employment with the city. So, um, you know, again, this is really a contract dispute over, um, amounts that were, were owed to him. The litigation involving, um, Chief Zisa actually, um, and I'll be speaking about this in closed session briefly, there was, uh, a decision on a motion to dismiss in which, um, a substantial part of Chief Zisa's claims were rejected by the court. Not all of them, but, um, you know, that, so that case will go on, though it, it has been pared down quite a bit as a result of this recent court decision. And we'll continue to defend against it, um, to the best of our ability.
Jim, you want to answer the other part?
Oh, about the audit.
About the annual audit, the 2017 audit?
Yeah, we received the, the draft of the, the 2017 audit, um, beginning of last week, all right? And when we received the draft, uh, remember that this is where the auditors' figures get compared up to mine, and we're still going back and forth on that. In fact, I just got a, a copy of some revised figures right about 6:00 PM tonight. Um, so we should be getting the actual audit now. Uh, I would imagine by the end of the week, okay? We did get the audit recommendations roughly about a month ago. We've reviewed them with the finance committee, um, but we should have the actual audit. I would imagine we would have it by the end of the week. Okay? As soon as we have it, uh, it'll be posted up on the website.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Edmonds? Good, thank you. Next, please.
Regina de Pasqua. Um, when you guys go to legal municipalities, maybe you can take a, um, brush up on the OMA law, because I had the opportunity, actually, I have it here if anybody wants to look at it. What, what is an exception? What can be discussed in the, um, back room? I had the opportunity to look at your miscellaneous discussions you had about 39 Broadway. I don't know how that's, you know, an exception. That there were two arrests at the USS Link, that's not an exception. Um, the shared services, that should be, there, there are too many things that just pop up that you guys never discuss in public, but you're discussing in the back room, and they're not back room deals. They shouldn't be discussed in the back. Shared services for fuel, street sweeping, vehicle repairs, which you just approved tonight. Those, these things, uh, free assessments for D, for DPW employees with a chiropractor, that's not a back room issue. Um, somebody, the Hack Pack guy, uh, consultant wants an extension on his contract, and it was determined, did you take action in, in the back room? Uh, you know, these things are supposed to be discussed at the COW, not in the back room. And I'll give you, and I'll give you a reminder that, um, you know, basically, it's legal personnel, contract negotiations. The New Jersey courts have recognized the potential for misuse of the closed session exceptions by public bodies and have therefore strictly construed. There's no leeway. There's no, well, I think it is. It, it, your miscellaneous discussions are not for the back room. They're for in public, okay? And the, you could cost us more money. Do you want a reminder? Do you want a refresher on what is permitted? What the law is? Do you need, because you just want to keep us in the dark, the mushroom party. The gun incidents, if Chit Chat hadn't put that on his Facebook, we wouldn't have known. If Chit Chat hadn't put that out there, that their employee was held at gunpoint in the city of Hackensack, none of you would have let us know, and I, I understand there are more incidents, and none of you let us know, and none of you let us know about West Nile in my neighborhood, that there was a human case in my neighborhood. We were told that they were spraying. Oh, so they're spraying. No, they only spray when there is a human case. They don't spray, they don't come in and say, hey, let us spray. They spray because there's a human case of West Nile, and nobody told my neighborhood that there was a human case until I asked you. I asked, because I put it together, you know, but most people didn't know. And there were people that did not get the nixle, that did not get the phone call. Uh, so you guys want to keep us in the dark. That's what you want to do. And I'll take a radon kit because they're good for when you're selling your home.
Next, please.
Good evening again. Um, I'd like to talk about the murals. First of all, as a property owner, as an artist myself, no ordinance is going to tell me what I can paint on my private property, and I will purposefully, if you make a, if you do something that limits art, I will purposefully put something on my building that goes over the border, and I will challenge you, and I will mortgage my house to challenge you. You could take that to the bank, because I will. The other thing, I wanted to help the city. When I was a kid, I discovered they were tearing down Van Gelder, and I had a lot of ideas for it. They tore it down anyway. Still have a shelf, which I'm cutting up. I proposed an artist from Newark, New Jersey, who's a very popular person in the jazz community. His art was very avant garde, but he also had another artist who was a realist. He does, he's a black artist, uh, from, uh, New York, and he does real hand-pitograph paintings of great jazz artists. He was going to be involved at 1.2. And the third, who was a very famous singer, who does jazz landmarks, and she's famous. She plays all over the world. A fourth, I'm not, I'm not even going to mention his name, but he has international appeal, and if he would have allowed you to put one of his paintings there, Hackensack would be on the mend. Not to mention, these are all jazz people. You guys would have had the greatest jazz radio station in the world involved in promoting your, your place there, but you didn't do it. I can't go back there again. But, you know, I mean, I can't help you anymore. I mean, I really could have helped you with this. But as far as the art goes, nobody's going to limit art. What are you going to do next? Limit what kind of music somebody can play outside on their porch? You can't do that. Can't do it. And I'll be the first to challenge you in court. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Carolyn Davis. 1092 Stanley Place in Hackensack. I have a question about the radon kits. For people who aren't here, um, is there someplace they can call or go to get them for single-family homes?
Health Department.
The Health Department?
They're going to be available at the, um, Rabies Clinic on Thursday night at the, um, DPW at 120. So, you could pick up a kit there.
At the Rabies Clinic?
Yes, ma'am.
On Thursday?
Yep, 16.
Monday, Thursday night?
Thursday night, this coming.
Okay.
November 1st.
Good. Um, if I understand correctly, um, the last times at a city council meeting, I presented you all with some nice pictures of what my block looks like when it rains heavily. And if I understand correctly, tonight, part, and one of the questions I asked was in redevelopment, could the developers play a major role in doing that? So if I understand correctly, as far as the Second Street redevelopment plan, they are being asked to take part in that before they develop. So I was glad to hear that, because that's what I was saying last time. We have a lot of development, but it's time to say enough development until we fix some of the, uh, the infrastructure. So, thankful to hear that.
Thank you.
Richard Solik in Hackensack, New Jersey. Um, actually, listening tonight to the presentation regarding the, uh, the greenhouse, and knowing how busy that park is with tennis and soccer, the greenhouse, and we refer to that parking lot as our lot. It's not our lot.
I know.
You really should start thinking about taking it, by way of condemnation.
It's, it's crossed in my mind.
You need to do it, because you don't know what's going to be the future for Sears, and someone may come in, take over, and want to build something there.
Had that conversation actually earlier last week.
Good. I, pro haste. Put some money in your attorney's pocket.
Unfortunately, it's a different attorney.
Oh, he can handle this. Um, with respect to redevelopment, uh, at a recent meeting, Ms. Castro, you indicated that the, the team, whatever it is, there's a financial advisor who you, you serve. Who, who is that?
We use, um, Mike Henley from, is it NW? NW Financial? That's the name of the company.
And are they contracted with the city, or they're just under contract?
He's, he's one of our professionals.
Okay.
He's one of our professionals, and he charges the escrow accounts for the redevelopment.
Okay, thank you.
For doing the financial analysis on the fiscal impact studies.
Okay, thank you. Um, as far as I know, and I seem to see mine here, that's helpful, the only redevelopment plan that's actually paying, uh, payments in lieu of taxes is the Meridia, correct? Has that changed?
Correct.
Okay. There was a dispute going back, as I recall. Meridia disputing how their payment should be calculated. They did not want to include remediation costs in terms of, uh, the, how was that resolved? If I may-
Would you like me to?
If you know, sure.
I, basically, we took a look at their pilot, because, um, what they were writing off initially, or what their attempts were writing off at their construction costs, um, we, we really did not resolve it, and the way that pilot was constructed was not really beneficial to the city. So we got them to agree to make the terms of that pilot similar to what all of the newer ones are doing, where we will be receiving a portion of-
I know you didn't do that plan. It was fire-
Right. So it, it made sense that while we were talking, if we could get them to be more in line with what our expectation was of everyone else, and they graciously agreed.
Okay, okay.
So that's where they are.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Lilica Weinberger, and I have two missions, I won't say in life, but two things that really bother me, and they concern automobile safety. One is, and I think I've mentioned this before, a couple of years ago, one is the parking lots of the supermarkets or big stores where you park the car. Uh, we have an aging population, that's for sure, and people can get confused as to where they park the car, walk behind other cars, and I think it would be so easy that when they stripe the parking lot, they say, this is row one, or two, or A, or B. It's an easy thing, and then you remember, I parked in A or I parked in B. Okay. Another issue I have, and I don't know what the statistics are on how many accidents there are at intersections, but when you drive and you're looking for a street that's unfamiliar to you, it is so wonderful when there's an overhead sign hanging near the, the traffic light, where you can see the name of the street. I know in Florida, they do it all the time, and it's absolutely wonderful. But if I'm driving in an unfamiliar area, and I'm trying to find the name of the street on a, um, at a stanchion on, on a corner, which isn't always in the same place, I think it's, it's looking, it's like an accident looking to, to happen. So, if it isn't too costly to have overhead signs, at least in Hackensack, I can't speak for the other places, I think that would be wonderful.
I like that idea.
And if the stores could be encouraged to mark the aisles that the cars park in, I think that would be a very big help, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
Okay, good evening. Kathleen Salo, 47 Lowery Street, Hackensack. Um, I'm so happy and thankful that the roadway handicap was put on the docket tonight, and I think Jan and Sergeant Natal and anybody else that facilitated it, because we had a problem. It wasn't going, but they had to get all the engineer again, and it did happen. Um, also, the bus shelter is on its way, and we have a lot of concerned people that are working on it very nicely, and I, it should be up and running next week, right, Mr. City Manager? It should be moving along. The light on First Street that I had asked for, and we had evaluated that we needed, we're waiting for the PSC and G man to come back from vacation. Across the street from, uh, from Ms. T there, it's very, very dark, and, um, uh, the PSC and G man has to come, because we have to order from him. It has to be a special order. So that's been good. Um, I, you know, I live across the street from the M and M Building, and I checked out the doors, the exits to the building, and it's an enormous building with the capacity of like 400, and I talked to Fran the other day, and I know it's on code. I mean, they just, when you, when you say on code, the builder does just what he has to do. But I have a problem of evacuating the building. He said, out of the three doors, 380 people could come out. They had an incident in Walmart that somebody got crushed to death when, for a sale, and it wasn't 380 people there. Um, there should have been some doors on Holt Street. There should have been another door in the front, because if you go out the, if, if you, if you divide your court in half, and you want to go out the front, you have to go to the central hall where the old building is, and then walk out. And I had a fire, and I know my house well, and I had to think of how I'm going to get out of here. So I really think, I know, I had opened, um, a fire report, and there wasn't any. Nobody, our fire department didn't look at it. I don't, I opened a traffic report, there wasn't any. But as far as, maybe, maybe somebody from the fire department should look at it now while it's still being built, and maybe recommend a couple of more doors so we can evacuate that if, if, if need be. Um, still having a problem. Just today, I made a turn off a sale in there, and you stick out, you don't know where, where to go. It's really dangerous, and I hope we're working on it, that the traffic light goes back. Um, property maintenance is, if you're right around, it's, it's getting really, really bad. It's, it's worse than it's ever been. Um, and then the basketball courts, I was just thinking about the mosquito ni, the niro virus, or whatever, whatever, whatever we call it.
West Nile.
West Nile, thank you. I just, I didn't get the, the direction. Um, the basketball courts were a problem in the two parks, mostly, um, Polyfide and Columbus, because that water sat there all week and never went away. There's such valleys in those two basketball courts that it's, it's really dangerous, and there's so much water in both of those parks. So if we do, you know, it should be a priority to, uh, put, to get them done, mill them and fix them. Um, okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Tagged. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion to go into closed session?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed?
Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to discuss certain actions under Section 7B 7 and 7B 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, which pertains to matters falling within attorney-client privilege, ongoing litigation of personnel matters concerning the employment of a current or prospective public employee. Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack is of the opinion that such circumstances may presently exist, and whereas the mayor and council wishes to discuss the following issues: personnel matters, ongoing litigation, matters involving attorney-client privilege, matters involving the purchase, lease, or acquisition of real property, any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiations. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to exclude the public from this discussion. The outcome of the discussion will be disclosed within 90 days, whereas such time is the interest of the city. Do not require confidentiality.
Um, well, as mentioned before, you know, we will be discussing ongoing litigation involving, um, former police chief Zisa. Um, we also will be hearing from our special redevelopment council, Brian Nelson, on some ongoing legal issues. Um, given the shortness of the, the closed session, we're likely to have, I have a couple of other cases that may wait. We'll see how quickly it goes, and if I discuss them, I will announce them when we come out of closed session. I will say to the public, we probably will be running a little bit late, given the presentation from, uh, Mr. Nelson, so everybody should be prepared to hang out a few extra minutes.
Very good. Thank you. See everybody as soon as we can.
Just for the, for the assembled public, um, just to announce that we did also further discuss, uh, the Ryoto litigation and the- discuss the Rioda litigation and the Sharif litigation in closed session.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn the COW.
What she said.
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.